Yeah, yes.
Okay, very good, perfect, thank you. Board members, you'll need to turn your microphones on.
All right. With the hour of 6:30 having arrived, we'll go ahead and convene the public portion of our meeting. I'd like to remind everybody to turn on your microphones if you didn't hear Ms. Hammers already. And also, we do have Board Member Debbie Imes, who is attending remotely. And we voted on that earlier to allow that due to the inclement weather. So we'll get into Agenda Item 3.1, Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join me in the pledge.
To the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Item 4.1, Approval of the Agenda for January 6, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Hammers, would you please take the role?
Yes, Austin.
Aye.
Sense Report 5.1. Public comments will occur during the public comments portion of the meeting. The Board will not allow interruption during the meeting. If you're interested in addressing the Board, please fill out the required public participation at Board Meetings Form and submit it to Ms. Hammers. 5.2, Student Report. Bong, thank you for braving the elements and coming in, so we'll turn it over to you.
Hope everyone had an amazing break, but I'm ready to go back. I'm missing my friends, and I just miss being in the routine and things, you know. It was nice sleeping in, but I need to start waking up early again. With that being said, Unit Day is coming up quick. We are shortly under three weeks out. It's going to be Saturday, January 25. It's going to be, I think, from, yep, it's going to be from 11 to 1 at the BOF Center, lower level. And that is also the same week of City Tournament. And that is also the same week of City Tournament. I'm really looking forward to that this year. It's my last year, but yeah, I'm looking very forward to that. With that being said, second semester is also in full swing too, so I'm ready to get back into classes and just graduate. I'm ready to graduate.
The last semester of your senior year, like what's not to look forward to?
Well, I guess college is on that too. I am looking forward to that too, so we'll see.
Well, I appreciate your enthusiasm to get back. As a parent of a couple kids, I'm ready for them to get back too, so. Does anybody have any questions or any comments?
I ran into a whole table of teachers this past Saturday, and they were also excited to get back in their rooms today. They're like, I know you're going to call that day, but just if I can go to my room. So that's why we made sure the buildings were open today.
Got to keep that routine going.
It was good to see them there laughing and having fun and being relaxed.
All right, well, thank you for the report. That takes us to 6.1, Superintendent's Report. Superintendent Gill.
All right, thank you very much. We do have a celebration slide that, Ms. Hammers will get up there, we'll go over. We did make a lot of progress and headway on some of our facilities this week. Mr. Miller and I were able to go over and see them move in the tools to the construction trades area and kind of move into their space and their classrooms are on the other side of that large wall. But on the far right, you see that big open wall with the big lights over it. That is actually the construction wall. They will be able to build into it and build off of it so that they can build walls and put the plumbing through it, the electrical wires through it, and really learn about what framing up a project will be. And then they brought in so many tools and I don't know, these guys were talking about tools and I'm like, uh huh, where's that little screwdriver, I know what that is. But it's really cool. I want to thank Mr. Crainer and Mr. Handy for giving up their time during their break to do this. But I think it was really, they really jumped into action and thought it was a lot of fun. Lockers on the left for them when they're down there and that, a lot of cabinetry. There's a whole second floor that's on that top of that cabinet wall where they're going to keep all their lumber. And the Menards truck was filled up and brought all the lumber too as well. So it was just a really exciting, exciting time to see what's going on. I don't know if you guys have anything else on that before I go off that slide.
Yeah, I just wanted to give a shout out to O'Shea and Jordan Dunleavy, and then also, of course, Brian Crainer and Rob Handy for all that they've done to really get that program going. You know, I was kind of laughing when we were looking at all of the tools and all the stuff that got brought in there. It was probably four years ago now that I remember Rob was just asking for tape measures.
Hard Ls and things like that.
Just some tape measures. And I felt sorry for him, so I went and bought like the world's cheapest tape measures. I think if you had have stepped on them, they would have broke. But to see them go from just wanting some tape measures to this full shop that's, I mean, it's wired for everything. You know, they could have welders, the sky is the limit with what they could put in there. So it was just really cool.
It was a good day, all right, next. So this was maybe one of the best feel-good stories of District 186 ever. Mrs. Barnard, who's a teacher at Ridgely Elementary, and her grandmother really made some holiday magic come together. So you see two reels that were shared. If you look at that first reel, 4 million-plus views of that reel. I don't think we haven't even ever come close to anything. But in the middle picture there, on the far right, each student was asked to design a scarf after reading a story and really having to be a part of the curricular conversation. And then the grandmother took those pictures and actually crocheted or knitted each to match that picture perfectly. So then the students got to open those up as their holiday gift at the end of the semester there. And then she showed them their drawing and how it matched exactly. So, I don't know, it brought tears to my eyes, I know that. And obviously, 4 million people watched that. That's a lot of sharing, you know, we don't have 4 million people in this community. So nearly 500,000, like the second view too, we did another short one where they unwrapped their gifts. But it was really, really cool. And I just thought we needed to share that because, you know, it's something when you have your grandma be involved, that's something that the teacher will never forget, the grandma will never forget. And that was a lot of knitting in a really short amount of time and turnaround to get that taken care of. So, pretty cool story. I'm going to turn it over to Terrence Jordan, who's going to talk a little bit about a Panorama Family Engagement Survey. So I think you can knock out a few parents sitting right up here that could take care of that for you.
Yeah, we need all of our families.
Tossing the crowd too, by the way.
We need all of our families to complete the Panorama Family Survey. As you know, we've been working extremely hard in our district to create environments that are welcoming for our families and supportive for all. And so this is one of the ways that we seek your feedback. Here's, it's an opportunity for you to share and celebrate things that we're doing well and give suggestions for us to make some improvements. This data is, it comes back pretty quick, so we can make adjustments as soon as we get the information back. So we need your input, we need your support. You can find this survey on our district website. It takes about 10 minutes to complete, so, and that's what this survey is for, so.
Is that going to go out via email?
Yes, it went out on the 16th. We're looking to close it this week.
Clearly, I'm failing over here as the parent.
It went out to all parents right before winter break, and we're just promoting and pushing it and giving.
Four parents sitting right up here.
I will do it, I will go find the email.
It's right on our website too. It's on the website.
Panorama, the one that you have to have like a certain percentage to get results, or is that the five essentials?
No, that's five essentials. That survey is coming up in March, but it stays open a little longer. The difference is that survey, it provides summative information that we can use to make adjustments next year. The Panorama Survey gives us immediate responses and so that we can look at that data right away and make adjustments as needed. So we're encouraging all our parents to complete that.
Have you done your survey, Mr. Mensch? We just said you're a parent, you can do a survey as well.
Has it done 80%?
Yeah, we're trying to hit 20% of our families to complete the survey. So thank you in advance.
Right before break, it was hard, we know, so we're doing a big push this week as parents come back to school and we'll do a lot of social media stuff and all of that. Okay, I'm going to keep you on because Real Men Read, we're having an event here in this room, January 9, from 5:30 to 7:30. So it's the midpoint check-in, so you want to explain a little bit about what it's all about?
We're going to have our midpoint check-in this week for Real Men Read. It's an opportunity for our volunteers and mentors to come in and just meet each other and ask questions. We have a survey to help us determine how their experience is going. They could pick up their books for the second half of the year because we only gave them enough for up until January, so they can pick up their books for the remainder of the year. And it's really cool because this, if you didn't know, January is mentoring month. So it's a great start to the year, it's a great start to the second part of our school year, and a great start to the 2025 year to celebrate our mentors, tell them we appreciate them. We'll have snacks, they get to ask questions, pick up all their supplies that they may need, and get ready to continue the Real Men Read program for the remainder of the year. We've been getting a lot of feed, positive feedback about that program. We have over 100 men that go into the classrooms and read. Every third and first grade class has a Real Men Reader.
I want to, oh, go ahead. That's when I said something. Just a big shout out to my administrators who shifted from Friday until today to provide virtual professional development. Here's one slide of a school and what it kind of looked like. The teachers all, everybody said it went really, really well. We were so used to this during COVID that our brains went right back to where we were and things went really well. This was a math professional development that one of the schools was sharing. I thought it was a good slide and they talked about a problem, talked about how to teach that unit, and everything went really well. And every school did that. I saw schools that were doing like icebreakers and different welcoming rituals. And it was, it seemed like everybody was having a good time and appreciated being able to do that at home rather than brave what we all faced this morning. And those other groups who came in, we gave them lots of extra time to get to their job and didn't worry about that as long as everybody was safe today. So thank you very much for, you know, allowing us to take this step and do something a little bit different today. But with that being said, here's the announcement. We are going to school tomorrow. Everybody's welcoming, we'll welcoming back all of our students. Here's what I always want to remind us is that we do live in central Illinois. And here's the thing, we need to make sure that we are dressing our students well for this type of weather. Boots are fine, you can put a pair of tennis shoes in your bag if you want to switch clothes, you know, and make sure that you have the right footwear for during the school day, if you have PE class that day or whatnot. Dress up warm, hats and gloves. If tomorrow you get to school and you need some things, most schools have some supplies in that area for coats and gloves and hats. If student needs, please do not hesitate to either ask our family engagement liaisons or our principals for support in that way. But we are headed back to school. Obviously, buses will be taking it slow to be safe, not slow to be late, but they may be a little bit behind tomorrow. We'll do all of our best communications. But as of tonight, the city was really focusing on the neighborhoods. They have a really good app where they, or something online where you can look and kind of see where they're in. Steve drove today quite a bit, I drove this morning. Neighborhoods were horrible this morning, but getting better as the afternoon went. So I don't know if you have any other messages. First student cleared off all their buses, started them today, got everything ready.
Yeah, I saw multiple Public Works trucks out and about as I was driving around, so they're getting into neighborhoods. There's a really cool map that I found on the city website of, they have GPS tracker on their trucks right now. So just from our conversation from 3 o'clock to now, I know the trucks have been into Sherwood subdivision. So that was one of the ones I drove through today and it was almost impassable.
His neighborhood?
So, we're getting there. And I know they're out working really hard and talked to first student and they're confident that the buses can make it in all the neighborhoods and subdivisions. We're worried about, a little bit maybe about some of the mobile home parks, but we don't, the city doesn't really have control over those. So hopefully, some of those get plowed. But the main roads are all done, we're just, they're working on the side streets right now.
I'd like to give a shout out to our maintenance and construction crews here in District 186. The parking lots look amazing, and I know they've been working since last night, I think, and came in.
Go ahead and tell them.
Yeah, share with us, please.
Our U Crew started working at 9:00 and then finished at their normal time today, 9:00 last night, and then finished their normal time this afternoon. So they'll be hitting it again, double checking everything tomorrow morning, the entrances, some of the entrances, the plows coming by, and then sort of blocked up the entrances, so we have those to get to tomorrow morning. Then we'll resalt, make sure everybody's safe.
Well, please thank that crew because the parking lots and sidewalks at the schools, I drove by a couple of schools today and the parking lot here at Fiat is like, I mean, I can see cement. I was like, wow, this is pretty impressive.
It went really well today, that having a full day to really work on that was a blessing. And every other district school, district around us, the superintendents, we have our little, everybody's going to school tomorrow. So nobody can say, well, what about those people? Maybe somewhere far away, but not here, we're all headed in, all right.
Only question I had since we have Mike, were there any storm-related like damages or any power outages or anything that we've had?
Not that I, I did not hear of anything in any buildings or?
And all the principals went and checked in at their buildings today, nobody reported back.
Nobody reported anything.
We did do a lot of communication last week. I mean, the weather, I think, would they start talking about this like two weeks ago? So we had checked all of our snow blowers and made sure everything was in working order, and so everything went really well today. The surprise snows are the worst, I guess you're not ready. Career Fair, we keep knocking on the door of anybody who might want to come work in District 186 this Thursday, January 9, from 9:00 until 1:00, and then again from 4:00 until 6:00. We're going to have a career fair right down here in the lobby for anybody who's interested in stopping by. We're a one-stop shop, you can get fingerprinted, you can fill out your application, have assistance, all of those things. We do onsite interviews and ask, you know, questions of you, but they can also ask questions of us about different employee groups. So that also marks the same day that we're doing Real Men Reads later, but in between, we're going to have a small gathering, a meet and greet for Arowa's. Last week here, she has done this Friday, heading into retirement, so well-deserved, well-deserved. All right, and so we'll have a little meet and greet here between, what time did you say on that one? 3:45 to 5:00? And then we'll shift over to Roman Reed right after that. Couple cool pictures, our school's our future, Springfield High. I probably had lots of texts and emails over break because the walls went up and people, just like happened at Lamphier. Once you see the walls up, you realize how big of a structure it's going to be and how nice it's going to be. It's very similar, a little bit of a different configuration because of the land size and spacing, but it is very, very similar to what you saw at Lamphier. The walls that came up are ordered months and months ago for this project and brought in on some of the biggest trucks ever. And I'm sure there was some consternation about traffic when those were being dropped off. But Monroe has had a lot of that lately with the state Capitol work, so they're used to it. The slide on the left is facing south towards Monroe, and this will be the South Administration Offices, which will contain guidance and attendance offices. The photo on the right is facing west, and this will be the Commons two-story atrium area for Springfield High School, similar to Lamphier. Well, you'll be in the new construction area with the original building on the right being that interior wall, just like Lamphier has. So it's the same kind of concept, saving that brick for historical purposes. The next picture is the photos of the interior of the new competition gym at Springfield High, which will mirror Lamphier's. And then the photo on the left is facing south from Washington Wing, which is the mobile structure, showing where the annex used to be under that arrow, next slide. Yeah, there you go, where that arrow is, that used to be the annex where you entered in between the gym and the school. And the photo on the right, the yellow outline, is showing where the cast-in-place walls will be set up for the new storm shelter gym. So it's a little bit, it's a little bit different shape than Lamphier, but it's got the storm shelter gym, the atrium, and the competition gym all in the same area there. Lamphier had like the perfect open lot where this was a little bit, you had to go around a corner. And so the last picture here is classrooms that were actually moved in today for teachers. So they finished, was it five new classrooms, Mr. Grossen? Okay, so these are two of the new math classrooms. The teachers are working to get their rooms settled up and prepared, they were there today, so they're ready for tomorrow. As you can see from the photos, the teacher desk is kind of down there on the fall. They, so you're getting a brand-new teacher desk, you just said that was an old-fashioned desk, okay. But all the furniture is brand-new. In those classrooms, you can see everything's mounted, a lot of fresh lighting, a lot of whiteboard space. Springfield High's never had that kind of whiteboard space in a classroom ever. The classrooms are pretty small and some of them still had old chalkboards. So this will be really a good move for these teachers that got into their new classrooms. Anything else on that, or no? All right, very similar, the cabinet work and everything is very similar to Lamphier High School's choices as well. I think it's probably the same. Okay, that ends my report tonight. I did want to just have a quick moment of silence if we can. One of our employees here at our office that we hold very dear to our hearts, Evan Knight Smith, and her husband lost their son to an act of violence in our community. It's too often that we have to have these and talk about this, and we just, we hope someday our community can come to a place where this is not where we go when we're angry or upset at somebody, but we choose ways that we can solve our problems. But she lost her son, LaJarvia Smith, in that. And actually, his brother works for us as a security guard and his sister is a student at Springfield High School. So if we can all just give their family a moment of silence, thank you. Thank you. LaJarvia's was a successful young man, he owned his own barber shop and everything, so. Be a big loss to the family, but we'll be here to support Evan Knight through the good times and the hard times that she's about to have, and the good times of memory and celebration that I know she'll want to have. And a big shout out to several of my cabinet members who jumped into shape this weekend. We set up a meal train and some other things that we're going to do to support the family. So let me know if you have any interest in helping out.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or any questions for the superintendent?
I will have the freshman-on-track report at the next meeting. Grades were due today, so we'll get it set up.
Appreciate it.
Well, hearing no other questions, thank you for the report. We'll move along to 7.1, old business. Does any board member have any old business? 7.2, new business. Does any board member have any new business? Okay, 8.1, public comments. Have anybody lined up? We will skip right past all that and go to 10.1, business reports. I'll turn it over to Director Miller.
Good evening, President Miller and members of the board. Tonight's business report will provide a recap of where we stand with outstanding state payments as of December 30th, 2024, and the cash roll forward for the capital projects funds as of November 30th, 2024. Outstanding payments from the state of Illinois for FY '25 total $3,196,188.52 as of December 30th, 2024. For Ed Fund, there is $29,195.35 due to the driver's Ed program, and $11,114.32 due to the state free lunch and breakfast program. A total of $1,325,887.32 is due from the special projects, which includes the early childhood block grant funding and the IDEA funding. Additionally, there is a total of $1,829,991.53 due to the transportation fund.
I noticed that those were all just zero to 30 days late, so that could just be a new year shifting everything.
Well, if you remember at the beginning of last month, we were at zero right after Thanksgiving, so those all came due right at the beginning of this past month, yes. For the capital projects funds revenue and expenditures incurred during the month of November 2024 is as follows. Investments for the capital project shows a beginning balance of $72,952,190.99. Total revenues in the investment funds, dividends, and interest was $571,792.66, while bond draws and expenses for the period came to $7,342,460.65. And this yielded an ending balance of $66,181,523. The district received $1,173,002 in sales tax receipts in November, and this was for the August reporting period. Since 2019, the district has received over $62 million in sales tax, and we have a 12-month average collection of $1.1 million. Currently, the district's sales tax money is used to pay the principal and interest on all bonds sold for those capital projects. As of November 30th, 2024, the district has $4,382,371 in its county facility sales tax savings account. The next payment of $9,276,000 will be due on June 1st, 2025. At this time, the district will have a projected surplus of $1.9 million in the county facility sales tax savings account, and a total of $12,520,963 will be paid in the next two bond payments. So, looking at the chart that you could see, the blue represents what we currently have in the bank, the green represents what we need to collect and save to make our June 1st payment, and the orange will be what we need to save on top of that to make our December 1st payment. And altogether, that is the blue number at the top for the total of $12.5 million.
And PMA is going to come at our next board meeting, so 10.2 will not be needed tonight on the agenda. They are coming from Chicago and St. Louis respectively, and they did not want to drive down today, and I understand that.
So, we have it slated at the next board meeting. President Miller, members of the board, this concludes the business report for January 6th, 2025. Are there any questions?
Questions for me? Any questions from anybody else? All right, thank you for the report. Welcome. And then 10.2, we will hold until the next board meeting? All right, that brings us to consent action items. Superintendent Gill.
President Miller and members of the board, I recommend approval of consent action items 11.2 through 11.8 as described in the corresponding resolutions.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? I would ask for some clarification on 11.4 through 11.8.
11.4 is the bid for roof replacement work at McLernan Elementary School. The lowest bid was just a little bit over $1 million, which was actually lower than we expected in that bid, so we were, we had five bids and we got a great bid out of that one. So, I don't have the name of the company right here, Mike, do you know who that was? I'm sorry.
Designed Roofing.
Designed Roofing. So, that's 11.4. 11.5 is for, we do an annual approval of our pest controls, so they check all of our buildings on a regular schedule, and then if there's a concern in any building, we call them immediately and they go out, and if they do find something that they need to, you know, take care of, a little mouse gets in or whatnot, then they go back and check weekly until they feel like they've checked and things have been mitigated. We received two bids, the lowest bid was $780 a month for three years, and this is actually 300 less per month from our previous year's three bid, it's the same company, AAA Pest. Cooperative high school softball team is 11.6. We've talked about this in the past, co-op-ing between our high schools. Due to a low number of athletes for softball at each school, the schools and coaches determined a co-op would be necessary so that we could all have a fruitful season, and if somebody gets injured or can't play, that there's plenty of teammates to keep the season going. This co-op is for three high schools for this year and for next season. Our goal is, of course, to build each school up with enough people so that we have a team for each high school again. Softball's always been a big deal in our community. I can't help but think with Shields Sports Park and the youth programs that they're going to put together, that things won't get stronger. And I also know, if you kind of count backwards, this is during that COVID time when kids were not doing any sports and doing those activities through the Y and other organizations in town, they're kind of trickling up now, and they're not, they're not participating in those things. So, I don't know if that's the reason, but I know we had great coaches and we've had great success in our community, so we need to build that back up. All right, where are they going to play? They're going to play at the Lampier Field.
They'd be a combination at Lawless Field and Eisenhower Park, and it actually provides practice space so we can go back and forth and make sure that everybody gets their own field, close to what we've had previously.
I know that in the new high school at Lampier, they've got a pretty cool indoor facility now that they can practice in for the nuts and everything, or good for golf, softball, and baseball.
Yep.
It'll be good. Also, 11.7 is asking for the board to approve tonight some course fee increases for this coming school year, not the school year we're in, but for '25, '26. Going back, we have not increased these fees since 2011. Most art classes this year will increase by $15 per class. However, art, history, and photography only increased by 10, and the AP art studio classes did not have an increase. A lot of this is just due to the cost of supplies, and it, they've just gone up over time, especially after the pandemic, and they haven't gone down. Business classes, obviously, the technology supplies, the updates to software, that's an ever, we're catching up to that all the time, and it's always increasing. And then family and consumer science classes increased $2 per semester for each class, and then textiles for sewing and other replacement of equipment, those are all, you know, expensive for us as well, so they increased that by $2 per class. And then culinary classes increased by $10, and that's just food prices. You all, when you go, we try to buy bulk, we try to go to the lowest vendors, but it is just expensive for us. This year, because we're going up in these classes, there was no changes for music or for any of the science classes. So, those are the main classes that have fees. I did attach, you know, for you the whole list so that you could see it, but that will be for next school year. It's important that we do it at this board meeting because we want to get the course handbook ready to go, and January is when the guidance teams go out and sign up kids for all their classes and do everything for the next school year. 11.8 is an agreement with Solian Health. This is similar to, we used to do dot-com therapy, they have not had the speech and language services that we've needed, so we went with a different company. They will provide two positions to cover vacancies and medical leaves that we have for short term this coming semester. That's all, I think. All your questions?
That was it, thank you. Good explanations.
I just ask if you didn't have a chance to read the full bulletin, to please do so, because there's some votes at the next meeting where I did some explanation, and thought you might want to take a look.
All right, so we had a motion and a second, and if there's no other discussion.
Aye. Gilmore. Imes.
Aye.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
That is seven aye votes.
Okay, roll call action items. 12.1, approval of personnel recommendations. This would be Ms. Sherman.
Members of the board, the superintendent recommends adoption of the personnel recommendations with one minor change. Letter E, certified, page 5. The location should be Franklin Middle School, not Walker.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Hammers?
Aye.
Imes.
Aye.
Leal Wolf.
Aye.
Mars.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Blissett.
Aye.
That is seven aye votes.
Okay, 12.2, approval of a resolution regarding Illinois Vision 2030.
I'm going to read a resolution that was actually provided by IASA, the Illinois Association of School Administrators, and I gave a pretty thorough presentation about Vision 2030. After I read the resolution, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Whereas District 186 believes in advocacy for public education and believe that strides need to be proactively made to face challenges and continually improve our public education system. Whereas there have been three areas of prioritization identified in this plan as integral in improving our public education system, these are future-focused learning, shared accountability, and predictable funding. Whereas future-focused learning should address promoting future-driven skills that allow for more college and career exploration, enhancing student safety and well-being, attracting and retaining a high-quality and diverse educator pipeline, and promoting curriculum and instruction flexibility to meet the unique needs of our local communities. Whereas shared accountability should address reforming the Illinois assessment system to be timely and a useful measure of student proficiency and growth over time, reforming the current accountability system to provide local flexibility for identifying indicators that create a more holistic view of student success, and reforming the mandate process to ensure implementation procedures that promote flexibility and local decision-making. And whereas predictable funding should address protecting the integrity and funding of evidence-based funding model formula, strengthening public education through pension reforms, specifically Tier 2, we discussed, and especially equitable funding sources for capital and our safety needs. And whereas it is imperative that any educational improvement proposal for comprehensive change must be developed and supported not only by the education community, but in collaboration with families, communities, business, and others who priorities reflect the best interests of our students. Now therefore it be resolved that the Springfield Public District, School District 186 Board of Education joins with the Illinois Association of School Administrators, the Illinois Association of School Boards, the Illinois Principals Association, the Illinois Association of School Business Officials, Illinois Association of Regional Superintendents of Schools, Superintendent's Commission for the Study of Demographics and Diversity, Illinois Alliance of Special Education Administrators, and the Association of Illinois Rural and Small Schools in supporting the Vision 2030 education improvement policy. And be it therefore, be it further resolved that the Springfield Public Schools District 186 Board of Education urges the Illinois General Assembly to approve the necessary legislative changes to implement recommendation under these three pillars of educational improvement that's outlined in this document, Vision 2030. Again, I had the pleasure of sitting on this committee and helping develop these. It was a, it was a really amazing group of educators that they brought from all around the state, and it was long and a little bit arduous at times, but we've got a policy plan that I think will really help move us forward. Thank you.
Quite a resolution to get through. No, thank you for your work with that, and we went through this document at the last board meeting, and this is just kind of a, I guess, a recipe to put forth to the General Assembly to help achieve some of this stuff. So, I would make a motion to approve this.
So moved.
Second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Hammers?
Imes.
Aye.
Leal Wolf.
Aye.
Mars.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Blissett.
Aye.
Gilmore.
Aye.
That is seven aye votes.
Okay, 12.3, student discipline. Superintendent Gill.
President Miller, to members of the board, it is my recommendation that one eighth-grade student be hereby expelled from further attendance at Franklin Middle School through the end of the '25, '26 school year with a program, and that one 10th-grade student be hereby expelled from further attendance at Lampier High School through the end of the '24, '25 school year with a program, and that one 11th-grade student be hereby expelled from further attendance at Lampier High School through the end of the '25, '26 school year without a program.
So moved. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Hammers?
Aye.
Mars.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Blissett.
Aye.
Gilmore.
Aye.
Imes.
Aye.
That is seven aye votes.
All right, announcements, 13.1, next regular meeting is going to be Tuesday, January 21st, here at the boardroom at 6:30. 13.2, upcoming events, that Monday on January 20th is Martin Luther King Jr. Day, so it's a holiday, there's no school. And also, January 22nd through 25th is, Fong had indicated earlier, that runs, I think, starts on a Wednesday, city tournament, so. Yeah, check that out, and come support a good time.
Will we have seeds and performances schedules at the next meeting?
Can't have seed yet because they start playing games, so.
We will seed on the 13th, and so that's our seed meeting, and then we'll work from there. Right.
Well, it's always some good competition.
Not only the schedule for the seeds, but when the performances are for the bands and the vocal groups that perform for us, and the drum lines and everything will be on that, yep.
And then 13.3, we've got the FOIA report, which is attached to electronic school board, and that brings us to adjournment. Is there anything that any board member has, or anybody?
I just wish everybody a great 2025 school year and a semester, and let's kick it off right by going to school every day and.
Yep.
Doing the right thing.
Drive safe.
Be kind, we'll do that.
Be careful out there and get to school safely tomorrow, so.
Yep.
On that note, we will stand adjourned at 7:12 PM. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job.